With that?
Yep.
Alrighty.
Good to me. I mean.
We make crane, it takes a bigger chunk of it.
Yeah.
So you're getting the worst.
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, any further discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Ten. Thank you.
Do we decide if we're gonna do anything with the covering the bins at the transfer station?
Well, we need to talk about it, I think. So what do you got?
Well, I get the materials that do the bins, cover the bins is thirty-five, right around thirty-five hundred dollars and also if we decided to do a lean-to is another thirty-five hundred dollars.
Well, the priority, I think, is to...
I split it up, so we could have choice you wanna make.
What do we have for money left in the funds?
So I had thought that there was money left in the transfer station repairs and maintenance building line, but there isn't that much, actually. So the transfer station is a, actually, okay, I, then I must read that line, so the transfer station has a two thousand dollar line, there hasn't been any, been any expenses to that yet. So that's available, and then the highway department repairs and maintenance line is a five thousand dollar budget line with twenty-three hundred dollars worth of expenses. So you have twenty-seven hundred dollars almost in the highway line and two thousand dollars, so that's forty-seven hundred dollars combined out of those two lines. And then whatever other available money, you wanna put from somewhere else if you wanna do that.
Um, okay. Do you have any questions?
So what is the priority to get the bins covered?
Yeah, I mean, the equipment, we can leave it out, it just, you know, it's piecemeal that when we can, we get some stuff inside, putting it together, whatever, I mean, priorities to get the bins, we gotta get them covered.
Yeah.
Because you're adding weight to it when you have the snow in there, so in the...
Well, actually, in the bins, it's not so much weight now, it's just that everything gets frozen and then when you try to get the plastic out and all that stuff, so it's, that stuff should be covered up.
What about getting tarp's and stuff to cover your equipment instead of your main tube on a temporary basis?
Oh, we, we get most of the stuff covered up, I mean, it's just, it's definitely, we wanna swap it year-round, you know, we just be able to drive the stuff in and leave it under cover instead of leaving it out once the weather all...
Well, let's, my suggestion is to let's get the storage transfer station stuff done now, and then give us another week and see what, we haven't landed a year to do a P O if we, if it looks like there's money there.
You know, it's gonna be made out and the stuff's gonna be ordered, but we may not get a bill on it till right after the first, it'll take about four or five weeks.
That's okay, if we just have a track of it, yeah.
Yeah, as long as a P O is signed, then we can take the money from this year.
Okay.
Right? Alright.
I'll move purchase order seventeen eighty-one to Middleton Building Supply for up to thirty-five hundred dollars for material for recycling, bin.
Alright, so you, when you order the stuff, you have to know what you're paying when you get it.
We don't pay until we get it.
You, you just give them a list and then you don't care what it costs? I mean, you have to know what the cost is when you're ord- when you're getting it.
We have, we have a list that's broke down, right?
Right.
The roof truss is at twenty-five hundred dollars.
Yeah.
So then we're gonna be ordered, that's why I'm just saying that they won't be here probably before the end of the year.
That doesn't matter, but as long as you know what the dollar amount is of what your bill is going to be, that doesn't matter when we get the bill, as long as we have this.
Right. Correct. No, no.
So is this one big roof over...
No, it's a separate truss, well, the way the bins are designed, two of them are twenty feet deep, the two of them are ten feet deep, so we get different sized trusses, so it's gotta be broken down. It's gonna be, you know, a hip roof, and then when you do your recycling, there's gonna be about a four-foot overhang, so you're under cover when you, when you empty your buckets and stuff.
And these bins aren't going away anytime soon, right? They're not, you're not looking to get bigger bins next year or anything?
Won't need no bigger bins, things, no, that, that was designed that way to continue doing full-stream recycling, not going back to single stream, which would be a mistake.
In the test zone, yeah. Oh, I see.
Yep.
So how many roofs are we talking about? You should have a quantity here.
It's gonna be one new structure, but it's gonna be...
So it covers the...
Oh, it's just gonna be, you're not gonna do separate of...
All the bins are in the business, all the bins is tied together, so it's just going over the whole bin section.
Oh, I see, okay, so it's just one. Okay. Okay, so then if you know that it's gonna be over thirty-five, you need to let Caroline know, once you go in and know, you have a better idea about the prices, okay? Alright, any further discussion?
No, I'm good.
Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 The new truck made it in before the storm.
Cool.
And worked fine, so. Anything for me?
Why did you get such a short backend? I guess I wasn't expecting to see it so small.
It isn't now. We put sides on it.
Oh, was that the intention?
No, they cannot, we kept that truck under the twenty-six thousand G B W, they can offer a bigger dump body on it.
Okay.
And that, that body is designed for that particular truck. It's a shorter size, but we put ten inch size high, ten inch higher size on it, so it
Okay.
Just the way it was designed.
Okay.
See, that's got a tilt, there's a bed inside the bed that tips up.
Right, 'cause you're gonna stand from the middle of the bed, right?
No, you're standing right behind a cab, so...
Yeah, yeah, so that's...
And so much easier.
Okay, alright, I was just curious, I wasn't expecting it, I was saying, where's the other half of that? Sorry.
They can't put, that's what was wrong with the other truck.
Yeah.
It was overbuilt, it was, the body on it was bigger than the truck could handle, and that's what short the life of that vehicle. This one has got more power than and we can, actually, this truck here will go up Highland Street and...
Could.
Yeah, so...
The one down here there that you had a hard time with too, it's the mechanic...
And then mechanic tree without any of them, that truck, but we, we tried it on all the streets that we thought we'd have problems with, and it fits in, you know, then the job's supposed to do, then the sanding, now with the sanding underneath the truck the way it should be, it's even a little plus, so...
Alright, any other questions?
No, I'm good.
Alrighty.
Thanks, Josh.
Thanks, Josh.
Can I just give a seat one? Actually, can you give that to you?
Well, look, I just paid this.
Recently, the town received their bill from Townsend to do a repair on the furnace. When they came to do the yearly inspection, they found there was, there was an issue on the inside of the furnace. Some sleeve that goes over the burner part needed to be replaced. So I sentenced the bill for three hundred and thirty-one dollars and three cents. And of course, the bill just says parts and labor. So I went back and I complained to them, says again, you know, we're going through the same thing, you said you're gonna be specific on your invoices in the future, that you're gonna, you're gonna let us know what the issue is. So, they're still trying to rectify that. By the meantime, I got them to now invoice this bill, so, for us, so, just to let you know. And we've also started this year, recently, that we're actually starting an Excel spreadsheet for all of our equipment downstairs. We've done it for the cruisers and the cruiser, cruiser items, but we now have a spreadsheet for the furnace, for all the H V A C units and the general. So every time there is a, an issue, date, the repair, how much it cost, whatever, so, somewhere we'll have something in this town.
Excellent.
My number, porters orders here, I met with Caroline last, was this the last Thursday or Friday, and we discussed these, and there was sufficient money, and we police budget to take care of all of these, except for this last one, it's still plenty of money, but I didn't discuss this one with Caroline. The first one is number one seven one five, made out to the graphics shop, G R A F I X, for four hundred and sixty-two dollars and no cents. And this comes out of War Dog on number nine on the cruiser, and this is for the striping and lettering for the twenty-twenty cruiser.
I'll move purchase order seventeen fifteen to graphics shop for four hundred and sixty-two dollars for stripes and lettering for the new cruiser.
Alright, any discussion? No. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Just to give you an update on cruiser, our cruiser had been made, it's sitting in Chicago. Apparently Ford has detected some issues with some of the cruisers that they've made, so they're trying to rectify them all, so we're just waiting for the end of this one.
So you down to three cruisers at this point in time?
'Cause you, one, the transfer station is the one that you took out of service, how come we haven't done something with that yet?
Yeah, that, that one... Pardon me?
How come we haven't done something with that yet?
I'm waiting for Mike Spinney to take the stripes off. I, I sidelined that one September, we was anticipating getting a new car, because that one needs about twenty-five hundred dollars worth of work, and the muffler's gone. So rather than pay for that, just get rid of it. Okay, generator connection was here to do a major repair, which is part of our service agreement, and of course, they found something wrong with the generator. They had to purchase a bamboo, banjo joint and a fuel return line which had failed. And so that's a cost of three hundred and eighty-five dollars, now it come out of the town hall maintenance line.
Move purchase order one seven one one, so your generator connection for repairs to the generator in the amount of three hundred and eighty-five dollars.
A second thought?
Okay, any discussion? One seven one one. Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 Purchase order number one eight eight three, made out to the whitewater car wash, for twelve months, we're washing the four vehicles, for one thousand one hundred and fifty-two dollars, and now it come out of our fuel line.
I move purchase order one eight eight three to whitewater car wash for eleven hundred and fifty-two dollars for annual car wash.
Seconded. Okay, is this for next year or is this for this year?
This is for next year, starting, I think it's like December twenty-sixth or something like that.
So did you have the budget in, in your budget?
Yes, it did. Yeah, it was calculated in the fuel line item.
Okay, but we're gonna take it out of nineteen's budget instead?
Yes, this one's coming out of nineteen.
Okay. Alright, any other discussion? Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I thought it had its own budget line, no?
Uniform cleaning, guys.
Okay, several months ago, I had mentioned that we want to replace all of our seven computers downstairs with surplus this year because of the Microsoft issue, as well as our newest machine is, is ten years old. So purchase order number one eight seven eight, made out to Provantage, P R O V A N T A G E, or Tom LaBelle, I'm not sure, Tom's ordering, so I'm not sure we get the bill from them or directly from Provantage, and that's six thousand and forty-eight dollars.
And that's all of the computers that you have downstairs?
Yes.
With the software?
With all the software, yes.
I'm sorry, we need to get a second.
Yeah, oh, sorry, did she move it?
No, I moved purchase order one eight seven eight to Provantage slash Tom LaBelle for seven computers in the amount of six thousand forty-eight dollars.
What's that?
Alright, so, so it's all of them and all of the software and licenses and all of that?
All the software, all the licenses, yes.
Six forty a computer, two twenty-four for office.
Alright.
And includes monitors as well?
We'll never place any monitors.
Just the desktop, is that a desktops or laptops?
What's that?
Are they desktop or laptops?
These are desktops, yes.
Desktops, okay.
Our monitors are working fine.
Do you know what, what kind of processor or anything, sort of RAM?
Tom, what they were saying is not gonna be an issue.
Oh, yeah, it's just there, it's a lot for a desktop. But...
Oh, you mean for, for six forty, it's kind of a lot for just a single tower.
But it's probably savings, like, not that much for something else.
I can tell you the description, four P G three four U T A B A H P S by Elite Desk seven oh five G four S F F Ryzen five Pro, twenty-four hundred G, eight gigabits, eight gigabytes, twenty-five six gigabytes, D V D, R W, W ten P six.
That, no, it's not that.
It's not, if not, it's...
She understands it, then.
I know, it's just a little bit, but that's not like a base, that's not a base model, so that's good, it's not like we're getting like something total piece of graph.
Yeah.
Right, it'll last another ten years.
Yeah.
Yes.
Alright, any further discussion?
No.
And the money is all taken care of in the police department for that, six thousand?
There'd be budgeting worksheet, worksheet that I sent you today, and what I told you about that, has that budget money already allocated?
Okay.
And these are lifelong licenses for office, right? They're not like the year ones?
Are you getting the two thousand nineteen version or?
Yes, it's all...
Yes, we're gonna do the same thing you got.
Yeah, so the...
Yeah, cool.
Two nineteen, win that, yeah.
Nice.
Alright, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Purchase order number one eight eight two to watch guard, to replace a microphone for the in cruiser camera for unit seventy-four, and for repair on the main board for in cruiser camera number, unit seventy-two, for a total of one thousand thirty-eight dollars, now it come out of our equipment line item.
I'll move purchase order one eight eight two to watch guard for one thousand thirty-eight dollars for in cruiser camera repairs.
Seconded. Okay, any discussion? Alright, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. This is the one you've been talking about for a while, right, or was there an install in the cruiser earlier in the year?
We, um... We did a, we actually installed two this year, one for the new car, and then we put one on the seventy-three.
Oh, cool.
Yeah, and we have a camera down, yeah, we have a camera downstairs waiting to be put in the new car. So in twenty-twenty, we'll replace the last one saw, we'll add the new camera in the last car as well, so we'll all be up to date on the same. Okay, purchase order number one seven one four, Reds shoe-on, two pairs of boots, one for Yuraskovich, one for Morissette, two hundred and eighty-three dollars and forty-eight cents.
Move purchase order one seven one four, so we're at two point for two pairs of boots, in the amount of two hundred and eighty-three dollars and forty-eight cents.
A second thought?
Is that part of the uniform?
Yep, it's a...
Yes.
Okay, any discussion?
No.
Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Number one eight eight zero to one bead, B E A D, CPR and A E D. A E D.
A E D.
The police department needs three adult pads for our A E Ds, and the town hall needs one, and they all expired back in November. And that will come out of, ours will come out of our first aid, and the town hall, I'm assuming, come out of the town hall supplies, that's twenty-three six dollars.
I move purchase order one eight eight zero to one bead CPR and A E D for two hundred and thirty-six dollars for A E D pads.
Seconded, okay, any discussion? Can we deal with single purchase orders across categories?
One, always one vendor, but it can hit several lines.
Yes. Okay. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. I like these easy, easy ones, yeah, the new adult A E D pads, duh, let's go.
Number one seven one two to Axon, A X O N Academy. This is our annual recertification of a taser instructor, and that's four hundred and ninety-five dollars, now it come out of our code development line item.
Move purchase order one seven one two to Axon Academy for certification for a laser, a taser instructor, that's four hundred and ninety-five dollars.
A second thought?
Alright, any discussion?
So this is to certify someone on this?
On our department to be a certified instructor to instruct the rest of us, and recertify the rest of us.
So does that, is that like a course they take?
Yes, it's a one-day course that they have to take every year.
Okay. Alright, all those in favor say aye.
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 Okay. Purchase order number one seven one six, made out to L E D Lighting Solutions, for two thirty mile an hour speed limit sign with L E D flashing lights and the solar pack, specifically earmarked for Bear Road. And that will come out of our line item.
Cool, is there, like a...
Two thousand nine one forty-two.
Have they, or do we need to do any evaluation as far as like light dabbling off for the solar panel on that road? Or does it have to be in like a section of full sun, or is it okay if it's...
It's okay to be in a shady area, as long as it's getting some sun.
Okay.
Yeah.
Cool.
It does have a battery backup as well, so...
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's like, I didn't, I didn't want to eat some...
Move purchase order one seven one six to L E D Lighting Solutions for two thousand ninety-one dollars and forty-two cents for two thirty mile an hour speed limit signs.
Seconded, alright, any further discussion?
So these light up when a car approaches?
Yes.
When they're going over the speed limit, or just...
No, it's all the time.
It doesn't detect what you're going?
Right, it does not detect what they're traveling.
Any question? And whereabouts are they gonna be located?
They're gonna be in the populated part of Bear Road. One at Sligo and Bear, Poland Avenue and Bear. And we'll just have a standard thirty sign down on the end of the...
Awesome.
Alright. All those in favor say aye.
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 That'll be cool. Seems like every other day I see a, like a Facebook thread, like, how can we make people slow down on Bear Road and not go around cars at that intersection?
intersection.
And someone's like, can't we put up a sign? And I'm thinking about all these things that you've told us that you've tried and...
I mean, when my car vibrates and someone's passing me on the wrong side, it just, you know how fast they're going. I mean, I'm glad they're on that side, not hitting me in the rear, but, you know, still.
Okay, the last item is actually on the wish list, and I know we have money to police budget. I was going to order this year, but I'm thinking, if the town can squeeze out another thirty-two hundred dollars somewhere, and then the budget'd be nice. Looking to get this sign right here, it's one of those signs that tells you what your speed as you go by it, and if you're traveling over a particular speed limit, that you can, that the officers can set, it'll flash lights to indicate that they're traveling over the speed limit. Red, blue, and white, the numbers on self-flash as well. And what's nice about this unit, it's portable, so we can play some Bear Road one day, we can play a, for, no, for a period, I should say, not daily, but and we can play it on Connor Road for a period of time, on Roberts Road for a period of time, on Main Street, so it's adaptable, you can move, be moved around the entire town. And what's nice about this is also does record as well. Not, not, not this, not the license plates of vehicles, but lets us know how many cars, what their speed is and things like that.
What the speed is. And then you can do studies on... Yeah, in the time of day and stuff as well.
Oh, yes, yeah.
And can you collect that data remotely?
Yes.
Cool.
Is this, is this, so, so the, the sign that was on the warrant in March was a message board sign?
Correct.
But also had these capabilities?
It had a built-in radar in it.
Okay.
And it had the ability that you can put a message on the town hall, town family day, voting.
I just wanna be careful that we don't buy something that was, was voted down.
It, it's an interesting point, there's a provision that no means no.
No means no.
So it's up to the board if you think this is enough different. So for example, if this was exactly what he was proposing to buy in the warrant article, I would say it would not be allowed.
Correct.
Because the voters voted it down. But it isn't exactly, it's similar, so, you know...
We're hearing enough complaints about the speeds in a lot of roads. And that's what this is strictly gonna be used for, is to monitor the speeds and where they're going.
And what's nice is the violator, or excuse me, the violator, but the mowers themselves will immediately see how fast they are traveling.
Yeah.
And hopefully they'll curb their habits.
So I would suggest that if the board wants to approve this purchase order, that, that you do so, but then we call D R A and make sure that it's enough different from what was proposed in the warrant article, that we're not breaking any rules with it.
Okay, okay, I would, I would agree to that, but it, it, well...
Well, there's no...
There's no message, it's just this...
There's no message, right?
It's just, it's...
It's not a message board, and that's what demo was, was, it was labeled as a message board
Yep.
with the capability of being able to do radio.
Yeah, this is like half the thing, it seems, yeah.
And how much difference in the price too?
Well, the other one was, uh, was twenty-some one thousand dollars.
Yeah, so clearly it's not...
I mean, that, that was a full trailer.
That was a trailer.
That was a full trailer, a great big sign about the size of that screen right there.
Right.
And one with a solar panel.
Which this is, we're trying to, trying to curb speeding in town.
Well, right.
And, 'cause you only can put it on town roads, clearly, right?
No, we can put that on Main Street, the Silver Street.
They enforce speeding.
But not on the four.
Sure, why not?
Because it's a state road, you can, oh, you enforce speeding.
Yeah, we force, we force the...
You do, you give tickets on that road, right? Okay, that's good to know then.
And the state takes all the money, no matter what road it's on.
Well, that's true. That's true, that's true, oh, okay, yeah, no, that's it.
So what is this mounted on? Is it, it's not a trailer?
No, it's mounted to telephone pole.
Oh, okay.
Anecdotally, I'm a horrible, horrible offender of speeding. And when I see, I am, and when I see times like that, it does make me slow down. I see my speed and I'm like, it starts flashing at me, and I'm like, oh man, was I going that fast?
Yeah, yeah. So does he have this money in his budget that he can, that we can...
He certainly does, he, he went over reallocating funds, and, you know, he's got, that was in, I think, one of the things that you, you would, you have the thing here.
Right, the majority, the majority of money is coming out of, I spent funds for a full-time line item, because, you know, Sean didn't come back until May, we didn't hire Jared into Rico, and Mitch didn't start until February, so that's where the return is coming from there.
Yeah. Alright, so what are your thoughts?
Yeah, I think if, if you've worked out the numbers, but...
Okay, do we want to put a motion?
Librarians are ready.
Oh, oh, okay, alright.
Our person number one eight eight four to custom signals, that's custom with a K, for one P D N twelve speed limit sign package for three thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars.
And then includes shipping and all of that, right?
Yes.
Move purchase order one eight eight four for custom signals, custom with a K, for P M B twelve speed limit sign, the amount of three thousand two hundred and eighteen dollars.
A second thought?
Any further discussion?
What's the lifespan of the solar panel?
This one here does not have a solar panel, it's straight with, straight battery, double battery pack.
For chargeable battery. Oh, I'm gonna get confused with one before, never mind. Typical, typical five, seven day runtime. But there is an optional fifty W kilopan, W standard watts.
A time sheet that you have.
Alright, so, so we're gonna say that it's contingent upon getting approval that this is not the same thing as what we had.
I don't anticipate a problem, because it's significantly enough different that I don't think it's an issue, but I think it's still
Worth, yeah.
just that now I'm getting it somewhere.
Okay. Alright then, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
What's the last thing on the other solar panel?
She said between five to ten years.
Oh, okay, right.
I thought I have you, anything for me?
I do have one thing. And I know it's not something that you can do, but maybe you could make a phone call. You go on Rollins Road, we're heading towards Janko, three hour tracks. It appears, and I'm just saying it appears, the tracks are out like this. And it just scares me, every time I go over there, that's gonna puncture my tire.
Oh, would, would it do connect like this, tight or...
When I'm driving towards Janko, it, on this side, it, it, it just looks like it's, it's elevated up.
Is it like the end of a track meeting the other track?
Yeah, would, would you get a track?
Well, it probably, two pieces are, and one piece has popped up, and it's been that way for a while. I just feel like, if someone would tell me, it won't slice my tires, and I'll feel so much happier.
Sure, okay.
Would it derail a train?
Unless you look for a way, I'm familiar.
Over the roof or something, definitely, right?
But it just... But it just, to me, it just looks like it's something hit it. And it's before winter, it wasn't even like that before winter, I kept forgetting to say something. I don't know why it's like elevated a little.
Yeah, it's over on the.
It's, it's, to it's, it's on the right hand side. Yeah, so, anyway, if you would look at it, I'd really appreciate it.
One hundred percent.
Thank you. That's all I have, how about you guys?
Yeah, I'm good.
All right, so do we want to go into non-public?
Yes, but first of all, if you would, I just wanna say, can you get me the yellow copies of the purchase orders? Like take them downstairs and log them, but I don't wanna wait for bills to come in because it's the end of the year.
You'll get everything tomorrow.
Thank you, I wanna know what's gonna go on, thank you.
So we need?
There should be nothing else.
Okay.
And some other boxes.
All right, motion to go into non-public?
I move we go into non-public for personnel RSA ninety-one dash A colon three, section two, letter A.
Okay, seconded, something roll call, Miles?
Yes.
Nice, yes, okay, can we go into non-public? We forgot the vote to go back in.
I turned the camera on, just so we could.
Thank you. All right, so where are we? So fire is enough there, is he?
No.
Okay, all right. We're gonna do welfare at the end of the evening?
Yes.
And twenty twenty budget is?
That's just a placeholder, I don't have anything.
There's a placeholder, there's anything else, okay.
Yeah.
Recreation?
Also just a placeholder.
Assessing sales data?
That's the item in your folder, Jessica's folder there. It's a letter from Avatar saying that they put all of our sales data into the DRA portal, which is, the data that, that there, yes. So that pink sheet needs to get signed. The data determines our equalization ratio from Department of Revenue. The equalization ratio is the statistical number, the very, it's, it's how far our assessed values are from market rate. So, you know, we get a reval every five years, and then the market goes up and down and does whatever. The equalization ratio is, it tells us how our valuations relate to assessed values. So, so that's the sales data there. You can look at it on the portal, but ultimately I, I need the board to sign the pink sheet. We need to send it back to DRA so that they can finalize our equalization ratio.
So when you, when someone sells a house that, just for instance, if it was a hundred thousand and they sold it for three hundred thousand because someone really, really wanted it, does that affect what that assessing of that house is?
Does just what effect, it's the taxes are paid on that, right?
No, none of the above, it doesn't affect anything.
Okay, all right.
Except for the equalization ratio, it, it just becomes data for how, how close our valuations are to actual market rate. Assuming that was an arms-length transaction, you know, for example, if you, if you sell your house to your son for a dollar, then, that's not part of the sales data because everybody recognizes that's not market value.
But it, it probably isn't really market value either. If someone really wants that piece of property and really wants that house and is willing to pay whatever to get it, doesn't mean that that's what the value is of that house, even though that that's what they paid, or the market value for that house, right?
There's something that compelled that person to buy that property, and so there's no way to know, you know, statistically, or like, you know, you know, the data analytics kind of way, what it is about that property that compelled that price. There are not factors, I mean, it could just be the waterfront property's really hot. You never know what the, or, or because it had.
It could be speculation.
It could be speculation, it, it could be because, you know, it was the person's grandfather's house, like, you know.
Right, I was gonna say, it could be personal, but, you know.
It absolutely could be personal, but it just, is, is, it, if it goes up, it, it's fine, it goes up. It just goes into this data and, and helps to determine the equalization ratio. And by the way, the sales data also, within a given timeframe, is used to substantiate abatement requests. So when abatements are denied, if the board does not grant an abatement, somebody finds that their home value is not what they, it, it's overvalued, so they're overtaxed. They file an abatement, and then if the board denies that, they can go to the Board of Land and Tax Appeals and enter into negotiations with the assessor. They're always required to negotiate before the board takes it up, but those sales data figures always come into play in aggregate for the town, but potentially also by neighborhood or by a feature like waterfront property or, or something like that.
Okay, all right. Is there any questions on this?
No.
That's a bank sale, sale.
Um, for closure.
All right, so is everyone in, do we need, probably need a motion to, make a motion to sign this?
Seconded.
Yeah.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay, so we sign the top signature?
Right there on the left there, yes, thank you.
You guys probably covered this in prior meetings, but whatever happened with the police space needs?
It's on the agenda.
No, is it? Did I miss it? Oh, yeah, it is.
Yeah.
We'll get there, nevermind.
So we're gonna table D until the end? Oh, you have it, okay.
Organizational structure tax collector.
So, all non-department head employees of the town who do not otherwise report to the board or have a supervisor, they, they all report to me except the tax collector. So I've had conversations with you each individually about that, but it just makes sense, I think, that she have a supervisor so that she have a voice with the board and that the board has a more official communication line to her. I approached her about that, she doesn't have any concerns with it. I did invite her to talk to the board about it if she wanted to. It's hard for her to get to Monday night meetings, so she, she declined that, but she doesn't have any concerns. So she didn't feel the need to meet with the board about that if you wanted to do that.
Is, is this part of a personnel manual or policy that we need to change, or just a vote to?
It would, a vote is sufficient, and we should change that in my job description.
Which I asked for a copy of it, and I was gonna write up something and then we can do that after the fact. But as long, as long as we give her the authority to be the supervisor, we can modify her job description accordingly. One B job description, so it's always there.
Well, and likewise.
And there, that person's job description as well.
Yes.
Yeah, so that's trying to think about that, yeah.
I'll move that we have the tax collector report to the town administrator.
Seconded.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Effective immediately, I'm assuming.
Yeah, effective.
All right.
Seven ten.
Space needs.
Space needs, yep. What did, did we hear anything?
No.
Oh.
So.
Did we send it certified?
Yes.
Did they get it?
So, so I would just like to caution you to either say what's public or to go into non-public.
All right, you want, oh, is there non-public?
Yes.
So at this point, it looks like there is not going to be a space needs study, and I, I would keep it to that.
Okay. So you didn't get a signature card back?
We can get a non-public.
Card back?
No.
Okay, all right. All right, we can discuss the personnel problem of that, or you call it, reputation of, of person in the, in our non-public later, okay?
Is that because it's a, like a reputation of the outside company?
Potentially.
Oh, I see, okay, I guess I thought that it was just, that was for like reputation of a person in the town.
It could be anybody.
I, okay, I didn't realize.
If, if you're going to potentially disparage a reputation of anybody except for you three, then we should go into.
Got it. Oh, we can do that right out in public, right?
Right.
Okay. All right, so, so we're all set with, waiting a little bit for that, right? Until we go on non-public and discuss it further, okay. So policy review, transstation ordinance, PHD.
Public hearing dates.
Oh.
So it's just a placeholder, you don't have to decide them now, but we ought to have a public hearing closer to, so the deliberative session will be the first Saturday probably in February. So maybe the third week in January or something like that.
Okay.
So it doesn't have to be tonight, but I just don't want it forgotten that we should set a public hearing date for that.
Okay. All right, and the purchasing policy, let's see if we can do something on that for next week if at all possible.
Yeah.
Getting up something and writing on that.
Yep. I, I looked at it, I thought it was fine, I didn't, I didn't, I saw that you sent a note that Chuck found something.
They're all just, I, so I sent another version with minor revisions changing. He found some, it referenced administrative assistant bookkeeper in a lot of places. I thought I had gotten all of the ones that I wanted changed to town administrator. He found a couple of other ones. So I resent it to you all. It does, there, there are other policies that are referenced in that policy, like the credit card, user holder agreement and ethics. So I think it makes sense for those to follow. I just wanted to give you a heads up about where we're going. Since we're doing this one and it references, we gotta make sure that we're thinking about them contextually at the same time.
Can you send those to, to us as well, so we can look at it?
Yes.
While we're doing it all at the same time?
That makes sense, sure.
Okay, all right. Ethics and?
Credit card agreement.
Okay. All right.
What's the first one?
It's ethics.
Ethics, oh.
Ethics.
All right, board members' activities and updates. Anyone else?
I don't, I don't have anything.
Okay, Jessica? I have, I have budget tomorrow night and I have recreation Thursday night.
From week?
Yeah.
Yeah, how's recreation doing?
Um, it's going okay.
Yeah, there's a lot of them to, a lot of stuff that still get ironed out and stuff, so, but it, it's going okay.
And the two new members seem really like great additions. It's kind of exciting to have some fresh voices.
Just some new ideas and stuff too, so.
Yeah.
But yeah, it, it's going okay.
Sister, our visitor for Thanksgiving, she's, I've said before, she's like the head of a, of the rec department. And I learned, we were talking about, I didn't realize that she like answered the time, I didn't realize any of this. And her rec department is actually funded by like five different towns, little small towns. And she's telling me about how some of them like the rec department, some of them don't. And I was like, how do you guys decide who contributes money? And she's like, well, and just administratively, what a nightmare disaster that must be, like if one town doesn't wanna support the rec department and one town does.
Is that up in the Conway area?
No, it's in Vermont.
Oh, okay.
It's in, she lives in Bristol, Vermont. And just historically, the boards have all hated the rec department, and now they kind of are, some of them like it, some of them don't. And I was like, I do not envy that at all.
That would cause budget fluctuations.
Yeah, can you even plan?
Right.
All right, county minister, county administrator, what's it?
The front office is, the town hall's gonna be closed Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve because people are taking time for those days, they're not official holidays, so that is getting posted. We're working on year-end, closing out year-end in every way we can think to close out. You've got some disbursements in your folder to approve so that we can get as much paid now as we can get repaid. But we're in good shape. I've asked the department heads to finish getting purchase orders to the board by Monday if at all possible so that we know what we're carrying over and that that's minimized. So we're getting ready for the audit, and, and that's all, that's all good. The planning board is proposing zoning amendments. One of them is relative to junkyards, I have an update about that in a second. The other is about building permits and what we, what we require building permits for because really it's quite extensive and extensive, and I didn't realize it, it includes painting too. So it doesn't seem to make sense, it's more burdensome than most communities.
I, I don't think someone should have to get a permit to do maintenance on their home, I mean.
It doesn't improve the, the value of the property, that just.
It does actually, a recent coat of paint does improve the value of the property.
Cosmetic things more than other things, but, you know, so, so there is an assessing value, but is it enough to warrant the administrative overhaul and the burden to the task care? So, you know, if you wanna think, if you wanna look at that part of the zoning ordinance, the zoning ordinance is online. The portion about building permits is toward the end, I can send you the page number if you're interested. But think about if you wanna give the planning board any feedback about what you wanna see it say. I have Tom Clark working on what, you know, a proposal, the language itself, and I will send that along to you when, when he's got that ready.
So when you're talking about painting, are you taking, talking about painting the, your outside of your house, or you're talking about painting a wall on your house?
Both.
Well, that's typically fifteen hundred dollars, over fifteen hundred.
But if you do it yourself, would it be fifteen hundred to paint the inside of your house with one room?
It's never, it's never valued on doing it yourself. Any building permit that you get is supposed to be valued at what you would, what, what you would charge somebody else to do because it's about, it's supposed to be about the value of the property, so not about what is the value of the supplies. So the value of the property to the property is close, most closely matched by what you would pay a contractor.
I guess I would agree that the outside of the house, that makes a little more sense, but to paint a wall on it, I mean, a room in your house.
How many building permits have been pulled to paint?
Zero, pretty much, because we had to realize that.
I painted a room in my house and I didn't know that, I know you got me, I didn't know. I mean, it costs fifty bucks, but I, I put it on my building permit.
Well, we, we.
Yes, because that's what they were doing. Well, if you were doing a total, a large building, right. Yeah, I was doing two, I was doing reno, which the price included, the painting of the house. So that's what, I paid a building permit on that fee. I mean, that's, it was part of my job. I mean, my construction job, or whatever you wanna call it, but. Would I, if I just was painting that house, that one room in my little house, probably not. How much does a building permit cost? Because a gallon of paint costs fifty bucks.
Well, something, with something counted out.
It's twenty-five dollars as a flat administrative fee, and then ten dollars per thousand dollars in valuation on top of the twenty-five, rounded up.
Expensive gallon of paint.
Well, yeah.
Seventy-five dollars.
Yeah, so I have a look if you will and, and think about what you think about that. I also have Tom thinking about housing standards, because that's another one that requires town meeting approval to be revised. So if you all wanna look at that and see if you have any thoughts or suggestions, please let me know. January ninth, the planning board is having their public hearing about whatever it is that they're going to have for revisions. They'll be discussing that at their next planning board meeting, the first Tuesday of January on the seventh. No, on the ninth, that's their next meeting, so.
That's when they're discussing.
That's when they're discussing, they made another, they made, they made another, they made, they made another, they changed their schedule around, and then there's, so there's a December, I think it's eighteenth.
They're meeting December?
Yeah, they're, they're meeting sometime, yeah, the workshop, okay. So Thursday, December nineteenth, the planning board is meeting just to have a workshop to go over language revisions for zoning and possibly housing. So if you wanna, I will pass those on to you when I have them, but if you wanna think about what you'd like to see, by all means, let me know.
Just, how is the, the new arrangement with the, the planning consultant with Tom going?
It's, it's, it's overall working out really well. We have some process glitches, which kind of are always process glitches.
Yep.
But whenever there's a change, they become more pronounced, so we're working those out. But as far as the feedback and the information flow goes, you know, it's, it's much better. It's, it's much better, I'm thrilled. It's really good. I also wanted to just bring to your attention that the planning board's talking about impact fees again. It comes up periodically. We have the authority in the zoning ordinance to impose impact fees, we have not been.
What's an impact fee?
It is a fee per service. It is a fee per service, you have to, so whenever there's new construction, it's an additional fee on top of the building permit for the impact of that resident on whatever service you wanna charge an impact fee for, so.
Like fire, school.
Fire, school, roadways, or like whatever you think it's gonna have an impact on, but you have to prove the impact, keep track of it, put it in escrow and then give it back to people after a period of time if you have not realized that impact.
But isn't that what taxes are?
Well, yes, but it's a way to not tax existing residents for the impact of newly created homes that they have nothing to do with.
Oh, so is it something that only happens for like a year or?
No, well, once you do it, you do it until you stop doing it. So you can't just do it for this home and not that one, but then again, for this one and this development, but not that one. It's a uniform, once you do it, you have to implement it uniformly.
But it's a one-charge fee for the person who's
So it's, it's.
Built, is building.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, so, yes, but it is, it is a, it's a compilation of whatever those impact fees are. So they write one check, but it may be only for fire impact, but it may be just for school, or it might be for school and fire. So there may be multiple impacts, but typically it is one fee to the town for that, but we have to keep track of it. So it's worthwhile when you consider major developments in town and the, you know, the potential for major developments if the fifty-eight eight years on Bear Road becomes, we don't know how many homes, that could potentially be quite a lot, that could have quite an impact and it would be worthwhile to have impact fees. But at the same time, it's quite an administrative lift to get impact fees implemented if something like that doesn't happen. So it's kind of a risk benefit assessment.
I mean, but if you've got a development like Stockdale again, anywhere in town, that would definitely have at least an impact on schools.
Absolutely.
You know, so that, I mean, that's, I mean, the size of that.
So it's something that you would charge to the developer or the builder, right, not the buyer of the home?
Well, all costs, they're inevitably passed on, you know, because they have to make, they're gonna make whatever money they're gonna make.
Right.
Yes, you know. So I just wanted to pass that on, something to think about and, you know, if you have any feedback about it, I'd certainly pass it on to the planning board. It's, it's an administrative lift and it's complicated. But we have quite a number of really large parcels in town that could become developed and if and when they do, it would be a burden to all the taxpayers, whatever that impact is, if you're not doing impact fees.
And whose responsibility to take care of the impact fees, I mean, keep track of it and all of that, is it your, you and Chuck or?
It would be me and Chuck.
Why wouldn't it be Andrea?
Well, because it has more to do with planning than it has to do with, and because the enforcement of it would be in the building permit cycle and the planning cycle and not part of the tax cycle. So, so there's that, junkyard update, we do have a set of plans from the design professional working on behalf of the junkyard. It shows a satellite image of the use of the property extending beyond its legal bounds. He's claiming that that's not currently the case and that that's an old satellite photo. So Tom is working that out with the design professional and the property owner, so there's at least movement. It's not quite a planning yet, but there are, there are things moving. Tom was ready to suggest to the board that you approve his annual permit until he saw that. And so we wanna make sure that it's within its property boundaries before we have you all sign your permits.
So he's running without a permit right now?
It has been since, you know, the middle of eighteen, yeah. So we will recoup those fees, he pays annual fees and we will get those renewal fees when ultimately a permit is issued.
That's only like a hundred dollars, right?
It's not very much.
Yeah.
Yeah. That is all I have.
Okay.
Want to go through the binders?
Yes, please.
There's a lot of stuff in here.
Yeah, please do, yeah.
Okay, there's a, a, something about the health trust, just approving, I guess, what the charges will be for the health trust?
For the renewal, yes.
Would that say that we will accept their revised fees?
Right, for twenty-twenty.
Okay, so just one person?
Yes.
Sign it, okay, need a motion that we're gonna accept the health trust's new medical coverage and rates.
So moved.
All right, seconded, all right, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
What is this, Caroline, account quick report, town of Rollinsford Culver Reserve Fund?
If you look on the other side, there's a dollar amount of twenty-nine hundred dollars.
Twenty-nine hundred thirteen sixty cents.
Okay, so there are three expenses that hit the capital reserve fund this year. It's a question for the board, they certainly qualify to be in the Culver Capital Reserve Fund if you would rather have more money in the general fund. Or we can move those expenses over to the operating budget because we can afford to do so if you prefer to keep the balance in the Culver Reserve Fund higher.
I have no opinion. Well, you.
What's the balance in our Culver Fund?
I anticipated that question and I neglected to.
Is it more than ten thousand?
It is more than ten thousand dollars. So, so my concern is that we have this newly discovered, well, not newly discovered, but it's, the situation on Locust going on to Foundry is worse than we had known it to be before. And that's gonna likely require engineering and could be quite expensive.
And concerns of Culver, right?
So it would, it would mean, so we would start with cammering the pipes and then engineering and likely all of the structures from behind the legion to the river would need to get replaced. Or that's the worst-case scenario anyway, but I think it's pretty likely.
So it's better to have the money in the Culver Fund than it is to have it go, so.
Yeah.
Let's save it.
I just wanna pass that by.
So it's twenty-nine thirteen sixty, so are we all in favor of having that go to the general fund instead of going in the Culver?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Now we have a purchase order one eight zero zero to BIB Offset Printing for newsletters for the amount of two hundred fifty dollars and seventy-five cents.
Second time.
All right. Any further discussion? No, hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Denise, there's a letter for your signature here notifying someone that they need a building permit. All right. Do we have to vote on this? I'm sending a letter for someone who has not, not got a building permit for renovations.
I think it's by consensus, but that's up to you.
Yeah, I'm good with it.
Good with it. And I read.
Do you want me to put the address in?
It's three three Kalonzo, I just signed another one, I'm sorry, there you go. A bunch of requests for disbursements, one for Tamra for conservation for one hundred dollars. One for the treasurer, it says for three quarters of treasurer's stipend, has he not gotten his other?
Because the first quarter was already dispersed since it was of the previous election cycle. He took a quarter of the stipend, but he still has three quarters of it remaining.
Oh, okay. And then us.
How much was that one?
Nineteen fifty. Select Board for one thousand, one thousand and twelve hundred to Denise. Do we just go through them all?
I would, then we'll short, make a motion to do this, that and all.
Meals on Meals for one thousand.
This is, this is in the budget line?
Yeah.
Seeds of Faith for one thousand. Feast or Seals, formerly Homemakers of Stratford County for one thousand. Haven for fifteen hundred. CASA of New Hampshire for five hundred. Community Action Partnership for one thousand five hundred. Alba V W to Salma, and Cornerstone V N A for one thousand five hundred. It says they're all budgeted.
Okay, so did we, did we have something for the Shiggyard Association or has that already been taken care of?
It's okay already.
Hundred bucks.
It's in the line.
Yeah, okay, so there's a motion to.
I'll move that we approve the request for dispersment as stated.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
So we only, only one of us signs it?
It's, that's the way the form has been written, yeah.
Just don't sign your own.
I just, I was gonna say, I'm gonna pull mine out. All right, why don't you go ahead and I'll start signing and then I'll pull mine out and you can sign it, Miles. All right, now we've got.
Yeah.
If I'm in there.
I think that this is a non-public.
Well, that was in your consent calendar, which was approved right before you arrived. But by the way, as a point of order, you can, you can vote to reconsider the consent calendar and vote to remove something from the consent calendar if you think it warrants discussion.
Oh, I don't think, I think it's fine.
Did we know what we voted for? Not really. Because nobody's read the letter.
I sent that letter.
It wasn't the email?
Yeah.
Yeah, it was the email.
Oh, I thought you just sent it to me.
No, 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 that's, no, I sent it to all of you.
But what did we?
I would not have put it in the consent calendar without sending it to all of you.
But what did we consent, that we're not going to do anything with it? Is that what I consented?
Well, would you like to vote to remove it from the consent calendar? Talk about it?
Yeah, let's do that.
I move that we remove this from the consent calendar.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye. Okay, so they sent a letter to the board requesting an abatement, not even an abatement, but for you to waive the tax bill, which is not the process to follow, the process to follow is an abatement. So I sent you the response letter that I intended to send, which Denise initially asked me to hold off on because you've had questions about it. And then you seem, you know, through discussion, you seem to feel better and have had your questions answered. So I'm happy to answer any questions about it, I advised them in a letter of the process to file for an abatement if they wish to do so.
We can't just waive the tax bill, right, I mean.
Well, you.
Shred it.
You could, you know, you are the assessors by law, so you can create an abatement and, you know, make it happen on their behalf, but it's not really proper procedure. We do that for when there are errors, the abatements that you recently signed are because, you know, they're assessing errors that, you know, make it an error, you're correcting an error. But if somebody is disagreeing with the fact that there's a tax bill or the amount of a tax bill, the proper process for that is to file an abatement request so that you can document why you feel as though you are entitled to an abatement and that you can decide based on those merits that they are or are not entitled to an abatement. So that is the, and then that is either approved or denied by the board and then they can go to the B T L A or they can go to the Superior Court. But it's not really, it would be improper, I would say, to just abate taxes for an individual on their behalf without the filing of it in form and.
Yeah, I mean, I agree that I might like them and be like, oh, they don't owe anything.
Well, we all have to, we all have to follow the same rules, I think.
Well, right, and in the end, they have the choice to file the abatement, it will come back before officially and then you can look at it again based on the merits that they provide in the form and substantiating documentation that you do or don't at that time. It's just not the time.
In the interim, they pay the bill?
They pay the bill or they accrue interest on the bill.
So does this go into follow-up?
Follow-up, yes.
And everything else will be handled, she'll take it, yeah.
Yeah.
S H I, computer and monitor?
No.
Are we done with this one?
Highway.
I thought we voided, if that, if that was your, by consensus, you're good with that?
Yeah, because you found them one, right?
Well, so we do.
One six four zero to S H I for computer monitors.
But we didn't vote for it, so we're avoiding it, but we're not taking anything on something, yeah.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so Tom Lovell found for us two laptops that the school has agreed to give the town. So one of those will be used by the highway department and the other will be shared between some of us here in the administrative office. So that's great and it worked out really well. It is something that we should budget to replace at some point, you know, because they are older computers, maybe for twenty-one or twenty-two.
For the amount of what George is probably gonna be doing on it, it's probably gonna last him a while.
For any of, for any, either of those, yeah.
But anybody here might be less likely to last as long because you're using it daily, but. All right, so that's it, all right, so we need to get back into non-public. Which one is it, we need to do welfare for RSA ninety-one dash A colon three two for welfare. And then we were also going to go in RSA ninety-one A three colon two C, reputation of individual on the board, not on the board. And that's it, right?
I think you wanted to discuss a personnel thing, you said, did you wanna mention a personnel?
Oh, is that highway?
Yeah, you had mentioned you wanted to.
Yes. RSA ninety-one A colon three two A, a personnel.
I think you have a customer for community.
I'll get there.
Not wrong, I got a quick, cash towing, you getting any update on their hours that they're supposed to be operating yet?
That has not hit planning and that's something that will get discussed in the planning process, so.
It was a mess today out there.
So it's coming soon.
Okay.
But they're not there yet, so until, until they get to the planning board, they're kind of in this.
Rainbow.
Yeah.
Because there were cars all over the place today.
Today? I didn't know those were back off. Were they doing a removal of vehicles or?
They were way out in the mud.
It might be related to where there is activity where he thought his property line was within maybe his property line, he's not where it.
No, he's moving it, where it's in as a. Oh, okay, so maybe he had to do something like that, but.
All right, I'll move to go into non-public for welfare, RSA ninety-one dash A, colon three, section two, letter C.
Second. All right, we are now in non-public.